Regular session with the Berlin Mayor and Council for Monday, May 11th, 2020. As has been in our tradition for many, many years, we begin with all reciting the Lord's Prayer.
All who are in heaven, I will be thy name, extreme caution, thou shalt be found on earth as in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us, and lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil. Amen.
Please, I, Torian, pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, the first item on our agenda tonight is the approval of the minutes for the budget work session held on April 27.
Motion to approve.
Okay, we have a motion to approve the work session minutes by Councilmember Goyas. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. So the record showed that we had the minutes were approved around four to zero vote, and then all councilmembers are here except for Councilmember Burrell. Right. Next is the approval of the executive session minutes of April 27.
Motion to approve.
Okay, we have a motion to approve the 27th executive session minutes by Councilmember Goyas. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Again, four to zero. The statement of the closure for the executive session was, under the Open Meetings Act of Maryland, before a contract is awarded or bids are opened to discuss a matter directly related to a negotiating strategy on the contents of a bid or proposal, that public discussion or disclosure would adversely impact the ability of the public body to participate in the competitive bidding or proposal process. Now, we next have the approval of the regular session minutes for April 27.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve the regular session minutes to Berlin Mayor and Council for April 27. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Again, votes four to zero. Alright. The, we're now about, you know, we're using the live stream format. This is, I think, our third meeting, and we are about to begin item two on the agenda, which is a discussion of recommendations for stormwater project costs and stormwater fee increase options. Not for a decision tonight, but just for information, so we can start thinking about what our options are. Prior to that discussion, I wish to inform all citizens who are following this meeting via live stream of the proposed tax rate for the new fiscal year. The proposed fiscal 21 town budget is based on keeping the real property tax rate at its current level, 80 cents per $100 of assessed value. After the stormwater presentation and discussion, the third item on our agenda will be a public hearing on keeping the tax rate unchanged for the new fiscal year, which begins July 1st. If you have any questions you would like to be discussed, as I'm talking to all the folks out here who are listening to the, and listening and watching the meeting. If you have any questions you would like to be discussed about holding the tax rate at its current level, please send them to us via Facebook. A staff member will monitor the questions for duplicates, language, and appropriateness to the public hearing topic. Depending on the volume of questions, we may not be able to address everyone, but we're certainly going to give it our best effort. Staff member will read the questions to the mayor and council out loud via live stream, and we will do our best to respond. There will be no written response via Facebook, but the format will be as close as possible to the regular public hearing procedure the Berlin Mayor and Council has followed for many years. And again, that's not this next item, but it's the item that follows that. It gives everybody a chance to think if you have, if you have any questions that you would like to ask. It's one of the start of public hearings in a while. We have a pretty detailed presentation now from Darrell Kohler. And he's with EA Engineering and Technology. And Darrell, if you'll take over, we'll appreciate it.
Sure. Well, thank you, Mayor and Council. My name is Darrell Kohler. I'm with EA Hearing, and a pleasure working with the town for, gosh, I guess 10 years now, so. So every once in a while, we have to give an update on the stormwater program. So this is just that tied in with the stormwater utilities, some history where we are now, and some options to develop. So I believe everybody has his hard copy. What I'll do is I'll just let you know, next page or page number, whatever. So page two is just the agenda or the outline. So I'll go over briefly how the, and when the utility was established. The completed projects are anticipated and future projects. The project capital cost and budget summary. And then getting to the stormwater utility. The current operation through summary of revenue and expenses. Some potential impacts if the town were to consider an adjustment. And then, just in next, or the most, I guess, next project we're looking to do is the Nelson Franklin and Pine. Breaking that down further, so we can keep moving, phase it out.
Nelson Franklin and Pine is previous, is that right?
Yes. Okay, so page three, the establishment of the utility. So town orders, 2013 S1 established the town's stormwater utility. So in 2013 approved in January, it was introduced, and then it became effective in July. And what that said was that equivalent residential unit, or ERU, is 2,100 square feet of impervious surface. So rather than identifying a specific impervious surface for each residential unit, it's considered each resident or single-family home, it was considered one ERU. And that rate was decided was assessed at $50 per ERU, which brings down to about...
Just sort of breaking here, that was, it's $50 per year for per equivalent residential unit?
Right. And I think that breaks, that breaks down to lower $4 a month, so.
$4.60.
$4.60.
What else?
Oh, $4, yes, sorry. $4.60. And at that, at that time, the non-residential, or sometimes called the commercial allocation was 20, or is $25 per ERU. The initial annual revenue estimate, estimation was 570,000, which that was revenue generated from, 70,000 from the residential, non-residential, $200,000 and the general fund, which was in a little bit of an establishment of the fund, was $300,000. So let's look at, just a very brief history on that. I'll go into page four, which is just the outline of the eight projects that have been completed. So since 2014, or basically the last five years, we've completed eight projects. Project one was the West Street Culvert replacement. Project two was the Flower Street Offline Wetlands. Project three was the Flower Street Culvert replacement. Project four was the West Street Storm Dream replacement. Project five was the West Street Offline Wetlands, I mean, William Street. Sorry, William Street Offline Wetlands. Project six was the William Street Culvert replacement. Then project seven was the Cedar Avenue Maple Drive and Pine Street. And then the most recent project eight, which was Grand Avenue Submerged Ground Wetlands.
Just so we prepare, project seven, you know, Cedar, Maple, and Pine Streets, that was just the first phase?
Yes.
It was not the whole project?
Yeah, well, it is. It is just partial. Those streets were completed, the bigger project was, I guess, like six streets.
Right.
So that was half of the, we struck, we phased it in two phases. The latter part, which we'll get to at the end, is the finish up on Pine Franklin and Pine. Slide six is just an illustration on a Google Earth imagery to kind of, you get the reader to kind of look at the progress. If you look, it kind of, kind of puts, has like an arrow that points up. And those follow essentially Hudson Branch and then Bottle Branch. So we're systematically working up along both of these main waterways throughout, or through town. Project six, so again, one of these, I'm sorry, sorry, project one. Page six, page six.
Thank you.
So on page six, project one, again, I'm going to go through each of these projects. Some of the elements are, got some history to it, so I'm getting, anticipating spending a lot of time on it. But project one was the replacement of a box culvert and some introducing of some step pools with some natural stones. This was completed in 2014. It cost $134,000. At that time, we received 75% funding from the Department of Natural Resources with a 25% match from the Tupperware Land. Project two, which is on slide seven, is the Flower Street Offline Wetlands project. And this was the creation of a wetland along Hudson Branch to provide water quality and quantity. That essentially gets higher flows from Hudson Branch that diverts that into there rather than kind of backing up over to Flower Street and beyond. It was completed in 2016 at a cost of just under $400,000. And that project, that was in the heart of our funding. It was 100% funded straight from the community development line. Project three, the Flower Street Culvert replacement. This was the replacement of two aged elliptical pipes with two box culverts. And that was completed in March of 2017 at a cost of $330,000. And similar to the Flower Street Offline Wetlands, that was 100% funded by the community development line. Project four, the West Street Storm Dream replacement. This is still a stormwater project thing, but this was more deemed as an emergency need stormwater project as down West Street, it was imminent that we had replaced this piping along West Street as the street was subsiding and significant failure in that pipe was required. So this was completed in July 2017 at a cost of $426,000. This, the cost may seem a little higher, but there was significant utility work required along West Street and the intersection of Washington. And this, this project was considered a diversity project and funded by the town. Projects five and six, the William Street Offline Wetlands and the Culvert replacement. So we completed these projects and bid them out at the same time up due their close proximity. And this was the creation of a wetland along Hudson Branch, which provided water quality and quantity, as well as replacement of two metal elliptical pipes with larger concrete pipes under Way Street. That cost was $354,000, and that was multiple funding agencies. The, we received funding by the Federal Emergency Management Administration for $125,000, but that required a 25% match, which was the $41,000 from the town. And then the remaining cost of that, of that project came from the Grand Department of Natural Resources. Project seven, which is the Cedar Avenue Maple Drive and Pine Street. Again, as the mayor mentioned, this is, was phase one of this bigger project that connects Way Street all the way out through the pipe to Nelson. But due to maximizing the funding through, available through the grant agencies, we broke that down into a half, which was, and maximized our cost under the grant. So this included piping from a culvert under Way Street up to Cedar Avenue, up to the intersection of Maple, Pine, and up Maple a little bit, and then just really right at that intersection of Cedar and Pine. And that project, this, that cost was $455,000 and funded entirely by the Department of Natural Resources. Project eight, which is the Grand Avenue Submerged Ground Wetlands. This is obviously the most recent project and primarily a water quality product, project, with some additional water quality management. Project was based on grant funding from the Chesapeake Bay Trust. It was completed in December of last year. What remains is the actual wetland plants. I know it looks nice and green out there with some wetland grasses and stuff like that, but once that product, or that project is finalized, there'll be some nice plants in the center there, get some color to it, and it'll have some uptake.
Would you claim the environmental advantages of having those plants there? Because it's not just aesthetic.
Correct. So the submerged ground wetland project intent is to intercept the stormwater and get it introduced to some, some plant uptake for nutrient uptake. It gives a chance the plants will bring up, you know, what we consider like the cabinet to that nutrient uptake from that. They want to take that nutrient and foster this up for... And then the submerged ground wetland is designed so that water level can get up into that, into that level. So you don't see a typical stormwater management pond with standing water. You're going to see for the most part, a high percentage of the time, mulch and grasses up there. But the layers below that are a mixture of mulch, topsoil, and sand. Four feet of stone, then below that is good to the sand and clay layers. But, so it infiltrates very well, but when the storm events happen, it's going to rise up and it's going to get introduced to those plants that the water will fall in.
It would be like sort of a large natural sponge?
Yeah.
I mean, basically temporary holes in the water, then it gradually comes back?
Yeah.
And then basically instead of destroying plants in nature, or putting the plants to work to help in the morning?
Yeah, we're, we're taking advantage of the uptake from the plants. And then over time, it's going to, it's going to drink that water. But during the storm event, it's still going to be pushing that water through. And as we found out during construction, we had added bonus that at the bottom of next phase, it's a little bit sandier than we realized, which is good. So it'll take more.
Sure, more.
We've seen it taking...
And part of this too, it will eliminate the problem. It helps to offset some of the flooding in that neighborhood. And that, that's why the next phase is needed to eliminate the flooding.
The next phase is absolutely needed to mitigate the flooding in Nelson Franklin.
Yes.
I think we've had a couple okay rain events to test it, and I think we've seen it. It dissipates very quickly, but you know, as you've seen, it's still, it's going to still pull up in Nelson. And it'll, it'll cap that. But what I've seen is almost inside of an hour, it's really dissipated. And that's the function of that, getting, getting rid of that facility, taking on that water, versing this, sipping the water in the road rain again and passing.
Are the residents starting to see a difference in their...
I think, well, I think that Jeff, the town, you can speak to that. I know you've had more conversations. I've heard nothing but great things, but I think Jeff, you have more personal...
I will tell you the last, the last one, I forget the day of the last meeting, I remember that for you. It's different, where, I think it was a Friday afternoon where it rained Jackson dogs. It was flooded down there, there was no doubt about it. The actual pond, it didn't even exist at that point. So if you wanted to dissipate really quickly. And I know that my conversation with a couple of residents out there, they told me that they had seen a difference.
So what we're doing is, what flooding, when it does occur, is going away quicker than it ever has. But what we need to do is the next project, so that flooding only happens when we have an extreme rain. Can I summarize it now accurately? Okay.
Yeah.
If I'm asking.
And as you, as you get towards the latter part of that, that system, on Pond into Cedar, I mean, just a few years ago, when even we're doing construction on that Cedar Avenue, that intersection of Bryce and Franklin, that would be mess, completely submerged. There are two inches of rain. Now it's so much better. I mean, that intersection needs to be passed along, if you can get that issue.
That last major rain event, I mean, I'm not going to make you bummer about it. It was flooded up, but it was a significant amount of rain, a real short period of rain.
Okay. Which takes us right into our future projects, right?
Yes.
When, when is the target date for the planning of this place?
Well, we don't have a specific date. We did have a date and volunteer event planned for April, but we requested an extension, and we don't have a date for this, because it's not. We're working for, with the Maryland Coastal Bays. The premise is, and part of the grant funding actually is, community outreach and volunteer events. And we're going to schools, and with the situation we're in right now, just can't ask for a volunteer event of that nature.
Absolutely. We get more and more...
Yeah, so maybe September, being my guess. I don't want to wait too far, and when, it's more Coastal Bays. It's their...
Go home.
I guess they're managing that, that component of the grant and finalizing it.
Well, I think we're all very much more than hoping and praying that by September we're back to business as, as normal as it will be.
Yeah. I'm throwing out September just because of school.
Yeah.
And kids for the volunteers. And we can plant, eh, well, it depends on weather. We don't want to plant in hot weathers of July, hot temperatures of July and August. So that's my thinking, September would be an ideal to plant the rest of this episode.
We did have a comment asking if we could speak up. So that's why I did turn the air down, just wanted to let people know.
Okay. Well, to wrap up the project eight, the funding source was multiple funding agencies. We received $55,000 from the Department of Natural Resources. That was a team effort with the Maryland Coastal Bays, who was funding. They had $75,000 from the Chesapeake Bay Trust and $45,000 from the Tupperware Land. Moving forward to the future projects, again, this is an illustration. These are four of the, in nature, the bigger projects. So we've talked sensibly about the next one in series, the Nelson Franklin and Pine Street. Then is the West Street and Abbey Lane. Then we have Henry's Mill and Henry's Green, and then the Hudson Branch and Bay Street. I'll briefly talk to those four projects. So finishing up Nelson Franklin and Pine Street, this is connected, where we left off at Midway down Nelson and on to Pine. The design is not, it's considered 95% complete. We have all designed, we know what we want to do. All we got to do is segregate that, the part that we completed. So that's why it's called 95%. This, this is ready to go, we know what we got to do. The budgetary cost estimate is $850,000. There's some unknowns in that with the utility. There's a Verizon fiber optic that goes across Pine Street, that's going to be fun. So when we talk about the phasing, what I'd like to do is at least, you know, maybe we can ask for a price. Maybe that's the first thing we can do when we start phasing it out. But these are budgetary cost estimates. I'm hopeful that they are on the conservative end. So that's, that's the first project, or the first of these future projects. But certainly, I think we've all agreed, that's our managers and governors. The West Street and Abbey Lane, this is the existing stormwater collection piping at the intersection of West and Abbey Lane, along with piping along West Street, which is significantly undersized, and then as well as stormwater diversion and increased pipe deciding is needed. So design status is we have a concept layout, essentially for our grant applications that we've prepared. We've identified, you know, the, the piping that we needed and did some preliminary sizing calculations. But it's a, it's a different, it's a bit of a distance to go from Abbey Lane, essentially got to get that all the way down to Bottle Branch and that culvert system we put in. So taking up that, around the road and dealing with the utilities is going to get costly. I will say, this budgetary cost estimate is based on our grant applications. And we wanted to incorporate some environmental site type features, some offline stormwater components and the submerged ground wetland and stuff like that. That would be, that would help us and make us most competitive for this project. When I talk about phasing, we, in a couple of years, we got where we want to be. We finished Nelson Franklin, and we're moving on to West Street, Abbey Lane. We're really going to rethink this and phase it out and bring this number way down into a chunk.
Well, the total number won't get done, but they, it'll be broken down into smaller units, which you've never mentioned, the actual, the overall cost of this, the West Street and Abbey Lane is 1.8 million.
Correct.
So what you're saying here is that maybe in three, three set phases, it can be done, or something like that. So because coming up with that much money and one gone is just not likely.
Right. And we want to keep making progress, and that's when we get to the phase approach proposed, or a concept phase approach for Nelson, when we get to these other projects. I think that's what we're going to be looking to do, all concurrent with trying to get grant funding. So that's, that's West Street, Abbey Lane. I think we all know that's a dire need at that intersection. We're on page 16 now, the future project for Henry's Mill and Henry's Green. This project includes replacement of existing storm drain piping to correct elevations and size. At the end of, I don't know if it's Davis or the one over, is it Pan?
Pan.
And Court. At the end of And Court, when there's some piping that goes under a residential yard, I don't know if it was settled or, or left. We're, we're have some elevation concerns that we just need to get in there and replace that pipe, and that will help out a lot. But also, there are some improvements that go under the road that, of the cul-de-sac in between Henry's Mill and Henry's Green and the one to the pond over there. That, this project is estimated at $450,000. Again, the design level is concept, and certain will be prepared together for, for grant applications.
Darrell, where does Henry's Mill and Henry's Green, where are you going to divert that to? Is that going to go underneath the railroad and out somewhere?
So the route right now is, it goes into the, that stormwater management pond. And then it does outlet along the railroad, and then it crawls, and then it eventually gets its way over to Bottle Branch and through West Street.
So years ago, when we discussed this, and this is going back probably five, six years, I guess? It's, those pipes that go underneath the railroad were really neck wrong. Are we going to be, do we have to increase the size of those? Are we going to have an issue doing that with the railroad? And how does all that work?
Well, I know last year, the railroad company actually contracted it, went out, went in, and cleaned those ditches and cleaned those pipes to clear them out. I have not been there to check to see if they're actually full capacity during a rain event. That's a good point, so I don't know. They're sizable pipes. I think they're good, you know, 60 inch maybe. So I would, I would think that they're not at capacity. I think our, our, our issues there are relieving that stormwater pond and getting it, getting it over there. I think there's a connection.
Yeah.
I think there's some maintenance things that, that pond can take on that might help. We've, you know, been in contact with the HOA and gave them some suggestions. I guess it's maybe some, some funding, I don't know, for them, but that's on theirs. The town, what we can do is, there's an easement that is in between these, Henry's Mill, Henry's Green, that we can do this piping work. But, no, I think I would like to maybe visit that, that pipe and go on a heavier rain event to see where we are with capacity. Because you're right, if we have to go under the railroad, that's, that's a venture with the railroad company.
No. I believe not this fiscal year, but last fiscal year, there was a grant that we were trying to get for some planning and the initial phases of something behind West Street and Henry's Mill and Henry's Green, but we weren't awarded that yet.
Correct.
Now that was more an offline wetland behind the residential area to help alleviate some of the flood.
Yeah, so actually where Franklin Null comes on the outside, that has a little stormwater pond that goes out along that cultural field. And what we thought about is, there's some open area that would be ideal if we could do some... if we could do something offline there. That would really do well, one, for the management of stormwater in that area, but as well as the water quality. And would show very well in a grant application.
And that's something we did try for with the planning phases, but we just weren't awarded.
We, correct. But I believe one of the dangers we had against us in that application is we didn't, we weren't too far along with that easement process of that property. So if we do want to consider that, we gotta get in touch with the property owner and see if we can't get some type of, you know, you know, loose agreement. I don't know. I mean, it's gonna be maybe contingent. I don't know what we can do that'll show well in the grant application. But they felt that you don't have that parcel security. It's not the town. You're relying on somebody else giving you access. And that's gonna be tough to give you grant funding and move forward. But we don't have the confidence that you have that. Unlike the parcel where Graham had, and it was the town's own parcel and they recognized that and we got the grant and worked for that.
Is that something that we can begin getting those building blocks in place and securing? What would we have to do on our end to be able to do that?
You'd have to get an agreement from the property.
Could we get in touch? I mean, if funding like that became available, I would hate for us to have to, those have a very short window of time.
Correct.
The last one did. And we weren't able to secure that because we didn't have that in place.
Should, basically as you're suggesting, should we get the right away or easements as soon as possible? And that way, when the application is made, we've got that behind us. I mean, I don't understand why we have to wait to do that.
We do not. And that's a great question.
Even though it's not the very next project, I think in our scheme of things here, let's see if we can't begin that process this year and have it wrapped up by next year.
I mean, because if something comes along like what we had, what, not this fiscal year, but last fiscal year. I mean, we weren't able to secure that and we have to learn from that and move forward and try and gain that easement.
And I think part of this is public education, understanding that we're not asking anybody to give up anything. Just allow us to fix the problem and just all we need is an easement, which does not keep anybody awake at night. It doesn't do anything. And I think this is one of the things we have to do because, you know, people in the community live in a community. It's not just about, you know, if you're not being adversely impacted yourself, why then adversely impact dozens of other people?
I mean, every time we get a big ratings form, we were talking about what's happening over on Graham, Bryce, Nelson and all those. I mean, my phone's ringing all the time and I keep telling people, hey, look, there's a list. And we're working down that list, but we have to also make some progress. And if there's an area where we can improve, that's not really gonna cost us a whole lot outside of time currently, then I would like to see us move that there.
I think that's a great, good idea. Thank you.
Okay.
Hudson Branch and Bay?
Yeah, page 17, which is the Hudson Branch and Bay Street. This project is, I don't think people know this project in terms of nuisance flooding in that area, but it is a important project for the volume of water we get there. And that totally submerges the trunk line, this sewer trunk line of the town. I mean, it's still in some solid foundation, but, and it's got some armored up with that gave me a basket. But it's single containment and I'm seeing, we're seeing those slopes you wrote. So this project has shown well for grant applications. We just have been outcompeted. There's other projects that just got in front of us. So we are still continuing to go after this. Now, but to be at this project, it's a more important project for a water quality coastal bay. So the funding agency might need towards funding this project versus replacing piping in Franklin and Forester. So we can still, we can go along parallel paths. We can differ funding agencies. Now, I will say, when we get to Nelson, there are still funding agencies that will fund non-water quality projects. FEMA and NEMA, they will still do that. You gotta show, and as we've gotten those grant applications in the past, we've gotten one for Woodchuck. So we're still gonna aggressively go after that. I believe it's gonna be due in August. So we're gonna put a solid application. I think we got a good story to tell that we spent so much money on this part. We spent so much money on this end. We want to connect the two. And I don't know, sometimes I'm a little bit optimistic, but I think we got a good story to tell for that application to get some type of funding. Now, that will be a 25% match. So we have to figure out where we are in that project cost if we have a 25% match to go after that grant application as well. I know in the years past, when if the project is, you know, $800,000, then a good town dedicating $200,000 is significant. So, but when we break it down and get to the phase part, that might be something, if we want to go after a $150,000 grant for a section of it and complete this street, and then we go on 25% of that, that's a little bit more easy to do.
I think this whole stormwater improvements and stormwater litigation that we've done over the last few years is a classic example that if you go with your hand empty, it's gonna be empty after you go through the process. If you go and make a grant application with everything you can scrape together and you have dedicated funds for it, you can have reasonably good success and keep moving forward. And I think that's why we'll have a discussion and we won't have to make a decision tonight. But we are going to have to consider increases in our stormwater fees so that these are big, big numbers. So our portion of what we need to put up to get approval for these very large grants, we're gonna have to be able to offer up more than what we have in the past. So that's the motivation. It's not just to move figures around. But, you know, what we've done is, I think we're all grateful. But we've got some big, big projects ahead of us and we're gonna have to put up our fair share.
My call. So going on to page 18, this is a summary with the completed costs, actual costs, and then the budget estimates for those four projects. So without going over the numbers again, just in general, the completed projects, the capital costs come up to $2,273,000. And then to total up those four projects, a budget estimate of $3.7 million.
That $3.7 million is what we still need to do.
Correct.
And so far, we've done just shy of $2.3 million.
Correct.
So it just gives you some feel that we're not at the halfway point, but we've got work to do. And, you know, once the entire system's done, flooding should be extremely rare in any neighborhood. And then another thing I just want to remind everyone is that we're doing this based on the way water flows. It's not one of those things where you can just pick this or this neighborhood's over that. No, it's all based on the flow of the water. So we're trying to make sure that if one area gets ready, then we move upstream, so to speak. You know, it's a relatively flat, it's not terribly flat. And that we're taking sure that we're not just moving the flooding around. That we're basically diminishing the areas that are adversely impacted over time.
Gotcha. Page 19, this gets, starts getting into stormwater utility. So as current and will be the 2019, 2020 as budgeted, from the stormwater utility, the estimated revenue is $169,550. The expense is $129,550, essentially the staff and everything that goes into running the utility for the town. So, which is that estimated current available capital cost of $40,000?
I have a question about that. So if we go back to page three and we talk about the implementation, and if I see this correctly, it says the initial annual revenue estimation was $570,000. Is that, okay, is that counting the contribution from the general fund?
Correct.
Of 300,000?
Yeah.
And then it says our non-residential customers would equal 200,000 and the residential customers would equal 70,000.
Correct.
270, and what were we just at on the other page? Were we at 270? Yeah, where's the other 100,000?
The other 100,000 is when the proposed utility was established. It was for $50 per ERU for residential and non-residential. When we were going through the establishment of the utility, it was decided that for the commercial, non-residential, the $50 per ERU was, it became very evident that was very stressful. So one of those businesses of the commercials. So the town, through a lot of feedback, we decided to go for the commercial to be at $25 per ERU. So the actual revenue that, that non-residential and commercials collecting is closer to $100,000 now, which is the half.
All right, so hold on, let me go back to page three.
So page three was the estimated projections, basically, based on the initial calculations at the establishment of the stormwater fund in 2013 with the help of the general fund and the calculations at 50 per commercial and 50 per residential, estimated general fund, I'm sorry, estimated stormwater revenues at 570 to start the fund.
All right.
Okay. As the time passes by, be calculated, commercial at half.
So hold on, I gotta go back to 2013.
Okay.
So 2013, were these numbers ever actually realized? So $50 for the residential customer, that is fact, right? Two to death.
Yes.
And the non-residential customer, i.e. commercial, right? Would be $50 in 2013. Was that ever actually $50?
No.
No. And now explain why. When the audits got introduced, that was what was proposed. These number, I get your question and I think this presentation, this part of this is a bit misleading. These numbers are what, when the audits got first introduced, here's what we think or we could have proposed as utility or general. Over those four months, I believe from January to May or so, we're just going back and forth and those finalists, you got finalized at keeping the residential $50 ERU and the $25 for residential and then not residential was $25. So it was never?
It was never $50.
Correct.
So it was proposed at 50, adopted at 25.
Correct.
Thank you.
And that's why we're gonna have to consider adjustments, adjustments being upward for some of our fees going forward. And part of this too, just to give perspective, back when all this was proposed, this is all ideas. And now I think people have seen that these, particularly those areas, neighborhoods that have benefited from our stormwater utility. And I think now people can see its value. Whereas then, there was still a lot of skepticism that we could do anything about the rate. And that's understandable. And I also think businesses now understand that, hey, everybody, it might be just not any one particular property, but as a community benefits everyone. And I think there's a much, I think there's stronger support for the stormwater utility than there's ever been. So this is why later this year, I think we need to adjust those rates so that we get the kind of revenue, not just because we want it, because we need to put up more of our town money to get these larger grants to continue forward.
One more question. How did we arrive at the $50 per ERU for the residential and non-residential customer?
The number $50?
Yes.
That was heavily based on a financial study prepared by University of Maryland Environmental Finance Center and given through. And they calculated, the capital, well, we provided them at that time, the capital costs that we're hoping for to raise to complete these projects. And they put a, I forget, a 10 or 15 year plan together, take it into what the town can contribute, put that revenue and then to tackle those projects over that period of time. So it was calculated by, and the short answer is Environmental Finance Center.
Do we have a copy of that? Can somebody send it to me, please?
I can easily do that.
I believe it's on the website. I can't swear to it at the moment, but. It is.
Can somebody help me and send me a copy?
And Darrell, didn't they also do all that GIS mapping at the same time? When they were measuring everything in the town?
Yes, well, actually EA did GIS, impervious surface.
Correct. And they'd just been throwing darts at the wall because I remember them doing that.
Yes.
Okay.
For the non-residential, for each of those parcels, EA measured the impervious area or took our best estimate based on heroin. We didn't go out to each parcel and survey it.
Now, when we're, when we're talking about impervious surfaces, we're talking about paved and where there may be a structure, right?
And gravel drivers.
Okay. So those components go into this calculation for the residential, but it's been aggregated to say it's one per residential dwelling unit, I assume?
Yeah.
And then the, there's a math equation that goes into the amount for a commercial customer?
Exactly. We, rather than measuring the impervious surface for each single family home, it was decided, I mean, recommended from the Environmental Finance Center, but I think it's an adopted approach. It's the ERU approach where it's basically assuming that each households, each household on average has 2,100 square feet of impervious. There are some houses that don't have that much and some houses could have twice that much. So when you measure a commercial, a school, church, town facility, and say they measure at 21,000 square feet of impervious, they are essentially 10 ERUs. You take that about 2,100 per ERU. And their fee for that parcel will be 10 ERUs or 10 times where it right now is 25.
And that's billed annually? Well, I mean, it's billed monthly, but the ERU is an annual fee.
Annual fee.
So.
So for that example.
Right. We're talking about, if we use that equation, then we're not talking about $50 times 10 or so for each month. We're saying that on an annual basis, correct?
The numbers per ERU are annual.
Okay.
Correct.
So payment on a stormwater basis. And that was another thing I think people, once they realized, no, we're not sending them a bill for the whole thing in one dime, but over 12 payments. And it was interesting, I think it was a lot more fear than when it was implemented and then people found, wait a minute, this was overwhelming. And that's why, I would just be very frank that we're gonna have to consider if we're gonna continue to do forward, how is our share gonna go up? The only way it can go up is if we have an adjustment upward in some way. We haven't got decided, we're not gonna even try tonight. When everybody starts thinking about it, do your research and so forth. But I'm gonna say by the beginning of 2021, by January, we need to have something in place that will start building up the town funds that are dedicated to stormwater improvements that we can put up as our share for these grants, regardless of where they come from. And without those, the application process is kind of an act of futility. If you don't put up your own money, you're just, you're not gonna get the 10, 10 or 20 to $1 support from these various grant agencies.
Well, history, you know, shows us that. When we set up the utility and we had, it's ramped up by town contribution. And we could demonstrate that we had, you know, $700,000 and that revenue stranded to grant application. Within, you know, three years or so, we had almost $200,000 in grants. So, yeah, the more money we can leverage and show that the town's dedicated. But that's a lot of money.
And just for the perspective, so far, we've spent just under $2.3 million. Going forward, we need another $3.7 million. So in round figures, when this is done on what we know about now, we'll have the total expenditures for upgrading. expenditures for upgrading our stormwater, stormwater everywhere down will be about six million dollars.
Well, I wouldn't be careful by saying stormwater everywhere, if I may.
Well, stormwater, we're planning, we're planning.
I mean, these are the major hotspots. There are still numerous other areas that need some localized money to address.
But, we're gonna get those after we get the big problem taken care of.
Yeah, these, these are the major, major nuisance flooding areas. The other ones are smaller that we can tackle.
I just wanna make sure, because I'm trying to remember back to 2013.
Yeah.
Is, from what I understand though, when we no longer need the big, big projects, that's the reason the fee continues, so that we have an income stream to address these smaller issues wherever they may be. You know, we basically, it's just like any other utility, we have the funding to maintain the stormwater utility, which means controls flooding everywhere. But, you can't just do this overnight, you have to do it in stages, and I think that's another thing that people don't realize, is that there's a reason funding doesn't stop when we finish a major project, because maintenance of this facility will go on forever. And, but we've gotta fix it before we can maintain it. Okay? Alright.
Well, the next slide ahead is twenty, but again, just, you know, just wanna let me know if any questions hasn't gone wrong. So, this slide is a little bit more detail with proposing, or not even proposing, just outlining options if there was adjustments to the utility. So, residential stormwater fee, we've talked about that. The current is fifty dollars per ERU, per year, I actually put it in there. If we were to propose a hundred dollars per ERU, that would provide an additional revenue of approximately seventy-five thousand two hundred, and that's based on the 2019 actual numbers. But, putting that in a different perspective, the fifty dollars per year per ERU is the four dollars and sixteen cents, so that would, that's per month. And then double that, eight dollars and something for, thirty-two cents for a month for a resident. And that would result in additional seventy-five thousand. For the non-residential stormwater fee, going from twenty-five dollars per year ERU, even to initial fifty dollars per ERU, I think the town would be in a similar situation we were seven years ago, recognizing that the stress on the non-residential owners. So, following up, two options, if that went from twenty-five dollars per ERU per year to thirty-five dollars per ERU, that option would provide an additional revenue of forty-one thousand. If it were go, if it were to go to forty dollars per ERU per year, that estimated additional revenue would be sixty-one thousand five hundred, not on top of the forty-one thousand, they're separate. So, this is just to say, if you were to make the adjustment with the non-residential and the residential with these examples, I was gonna say, that's, that's the ballpark revenue you'd see.
No, I'm still a little confused on that. So, the Maryland Environmental Finance Department did a study and recommended fifty dollars for both ERUs. And we adjusted, or whoever was on the council at that time, took public input and adjusted that figure to twenty-five for the non-residential, i.e. commercial ERU. And we recognize the financial burden on the businesses, and now we're gonna try and go from fifty to a hundred on the residential customer. I think we got away the same economic hardship on the residential customer by going fifty to a hundred that we did back in 2013 from going from fifty to twenty-five for the commercial customer.
Well, I mean, all the...
I mean, I haven't read the study, but...
But, all these figures can be adjusted, but the key is what we have to undertake, and we have to determine is how much additional money we need to raise to be able to do the projects that need to be done. I mean, we can't get those size projects, the eight hundred and forty thousand and all this other, without our share going up. So, I think the thing is, this is an outline, this is a beginning, that's why we've got between now and the end of the year to figure out what proportional share increase should be. But, ultimately, we have to come up with our proportional shares of town, the monies that we're putting on the table in order to even qualify for the grants.
And I mean, I understand that you're saying they're really big picket items, and I'm not gonna argue that, three and a half million dollars is a big picket item, but we've also heard those can be broken down a little bit, it's not ideal, but they can be done. When you look at the initial stormwater problem we had, that's what, over five million dollars in improvements that we deemed needed to be made, but we can break these into smaller slices.
But, we're not even halfway done. So, we're gonna tell people that basically, wait twenty years.
I'm not arguing that. What I'm saying is, let's do what we did in the beginning, and break these down into smaller projects.
And that's what we will do.
That are manageable in a fiscal year.
But, we're not saying we have to do all, every project in its entirety, but we're saying the cost is going to stay that range, or it may go up a little bit, then who knows what's gonna happen with inflation. But, what we have to do is, based on the amount of money we're raising ourselves through our fees, then we'll know what we qualify for, and what we qualify for, then we can apply for, and in these plans, then they can say, okay, we can do forty percent of the next project. So, let's plan for forty percent, let's get the design done, and then let's put up our share and get the funding. There's no need to break these...
And I'm not, and I'm not disputing that at all, I'm not disputing the process, I'm just saying that the people that I talk to, I don't, I think they're, they're overextended as it is with the amount of money that we're asking from them in a given year. And by going fifty to a hundred dollars, I think that's gonna be a huge, it doesn't look like much on paper, but it's a lot for people that are strapped. And in an economic climate that we're already in, I don't think it's a good idea.
Well, that's why we're gonna make a decision between now and the end of the year, but I think the figures won't change, it's just depending on how much and how, you know, what kind of timetable do we think we can do as a community, not just as a town, but as a community. And there's a lot of unknowns, but these stats won't change. You know, it's not like suddenly stormwater management's gonna become real cheap, or the rain will go away. But, I think, again, it's a matter of how fast and how much, and I totally agree with that, but I'm just saying, we're not gonna, we need to get, I think everybody needs to know what the costs are, and then we can figure out how we're going to try to phase in these projects over the next few years, but not twenty years.
And I'm not trying to discount the work that's been done, it's been great, I've talked to a lot of people that have been impacted, I used to live on a street that was heavily impacted, so I know that the projects are making a difference. What I'm saying is that we have to weigh that difference with the amount that people can afford, that's it.
Yeah, I just, to note, I, the intent of this isn't to say this is what the town should do, I, this is like, if we were to do, these are options or examples, I guess I wanna say. And, just to touch on the fifty dollars per ERU, and then, you know, whether it's different for the residential, I think we looked at it as, what is that broken down towards the cost? Because the commercial cost, since they have such bigger, you know, property, it's going, doubling that, or even, it's just, it's just too much for their commercial. Anyway, let me, let me keep moving. So, with slide twenty-one, taking those examples or options, the estimated revenue between that residential adjustment and the non-residential adjustment, approximately one, would raise an additional annual capital of a hundred and sixteen, approximately a hundred and sixteen thousand dollars to one. The option two, which was that the twenty-five dollars per year, per year to forty dollars per year, would raise it to a hundred and thirty-six thousand seven hundred. That's what the results of making adjustment, that's what the dollars would have extra to put towards these projects. Anyway, so going to slide twenty-two is trying to break these things down so we can get, we can keep making project progress versus saving that four hundred, that full eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars in building at once. So, I broke this slide down into some things that we can work a little bit more with the town, the town certainly has capabilities of doing. We can perform some more video inspection, we have our own cameras and equipment, to determine levels of sediment existing, and some more conflicts with sanitary, and see if we can't get, you know, some of the low-hanging fruit, let's jet those areas out, clean them out fully. Jamie, he's not here, but he already does a lot of that, maybe cleaning a lot of that, but let's get into our piping and clean those out. We're doing a lot of great work with the dishes, and that's helping out a lot, but if we can get into piping and do that, that'll help out just as much.
And just something to be thinking about for the future, again, because we don't discuss this every meeting.
Yeah.
Is, some of the log jams, I know that's a cruel word, but in our stormwater movement of water, is that some ditches are on private property, and those ditches are not maintained. A lot of them, it's just the way it is. So, over time, we're gonna have to find a way to have that, those properties, the easement and the property become part of the town, so that you don't have all this investment, and then there's, you know, a dozen or two dozen properties that basically stop everything, and the water doesn't flow to the coastal bays. So, you know, that's another thing that we have to look forward to. When this, when this, when these stormwater ditches, as most people call them, were thought of, I mean, we're going back over a hundred years, and in some cases, part of that, and nobody was thinking about that at the time. So, I think that's one of the things that, it'd be like, we can't have a utility that the town is responsible for if we can't even touch a certain percentage of those parts. And we won't, we won't be able to do it overnight, but it is on our responsibility and all those who follow us to get that done in some sort of meaningful and expedient way and also a form. But, it just has to be done, and, you know, it's one of those things where, you know, every generation has to, you know, hand it to the baton, takes it as far as they can, and then they hand it off to the next, next generation. And that's where we are with the stormwater utility, and I think most people are pleased that we have one and that we're making progress. How fast and far we can go, time and financial considerations will tell us.
Yeah. Yeah, essentially, we're looking at it at a different way. We had the fortunate, we were fortunate to get large sums of grant funding to do whole projects at once in the past. We're not in that situation now, so to keep the momentum going, let's, let's phase it, let's see what the town can do, let's come up with new ideas, let's piece them down and just, just keep going. So, that's the thought behind this. So, breaking down, what I call the capital or the contracting components, just for the, this Nelson Franklin Pine Project, we can piece out the Verizon Fiber Optic, that's one up high, I mean, that's a large fiber optic that's in the concrete duct bed, it's gonna take some effort to contract that and get that out of the way. There's a sanitary sewer regarding, also be applying a little E1 grinder pump, that's gotta be out of the way, so we can put the increased piping through there, and then segregate sections of the actual piping, stormwater improvements into those three sections. I believe that's the last slide, I've burned through that last one, but the intent is that if, if we can piece these out, even if we're to use the little bit of capital we have, all combined, we're still going after grant funding. You know, say we submit a grant application for FEMA, for four hundred thousand dollars for this project this year, we don't get it, but this year we complete seventy-five thousand of it, next year we're gonna submit a three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollar grant application. We're still gonna use our, we can go after, and then at some point, we're gonna shrink that grant application, maybe get the last two.
Basically, it's not all or nothing, it's what we can manage based on our rich financial resources and with grant funding at any particular time.
No, we can still do building, we can still pieces out and do things. We have a stormwater utility, we have the means to do some things.
I think it's been a good discussion, it's something good. Thank goodness we have to go over to every meeting, but between now and the end of the year, we have to make some decisions, and, you know, strongly talk with, you know, the folks in your neighborhoods and business people and so forth, and, you know, a lot, I guess we'll all know the environment, economic environment that we're in much better by fall than we do now.
Yeah. And please share any thoughts or ideas you have, I'm really starting looking at those if, having to do a search on this site visit with anybody, I'd go out and take a look at any of these sites and try to drum up some ideas. I can't understand everything on paper, I mean, I can get out there and try to look at storm events as much as possible, but, you know, visiting with the owners and a resident that called you, or called you, that has some information that I don't know about. Obviously, it's my passion, I get excited about it, I can...
Darrell, I got a quick question. On the, on slide twenty-two, relocation of Verizon Fiber Optic at Pine and Cedar, why would we be responsible for that? Why can't we ask them to go ahead and move it?
We can. The initial contact that we had, we just didn't get that warm impression that this is your, or, you know, why do we need it, we don't have to move it?
They're not going to.
Well, I'm sure there's some, I'm sure there's some other options that we may be able to discuss later that we can get them to do that.
Okay.
It's a definite no if we don't ask.
Fair enough.
Yeah, I agree. Everything can be discussed.
Oh, absolutely. Okay, awesome, thanks, sir, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
You're good?
Okay.
A few more?
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, thank you, have a good evening. Now, up to number three on the agenda, and Kelsey, I just assume you've been receiving some questions and so forth.
Yes, and just so you are aware, there is a slight delay, so when you open the public hearing, you know, it might just take a minute.
Sure, understand, we're not in a race here. Okay, so, we're now gonna have our town administrator read property tax ordinance in its entirety.
Let's open the public, let's open the public hearing first.
Well, I mean, we, 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 we want everybody to know what we're talking about, right? Okay, and then we'll open the hearing. I want people to know what it is we're having a hearing about.
Very good. The ordinance that's being introduced tonight is ordinance two thousand twenty dash zero two, an ordinance of the mayor and council of the town of Berlin, Maryland, a Maryland municipal corporation, setting the real property tax rate for fiscal year twenty twenty-one. Whereas the town charter, section C three dash ten, requires the mayor and council to pass an ordinance setting the real property tax rate necessary to sustain the town's budget, and whereas the mayor and council had determined what the real property tax rate shall be, that now therefore be it resolved by the mayor and council of the town of Berlin, Maryland, that the tax rate for fiscal year twenty twenty dash twenty twenty-one shall be eighty cents or one hundred dollars of assessed value of real property located within the town limits of Berlin, Maryland.
Okay, which is the current rate? Which, when we increase the rate for the current fiscal year, and what we're recommending is that that rate continue to be the same for the next fiscal year. So, now, we'll open the public hearing, and you, first of all, do we have any, Jeff, do we have any questions or comments that have been submitted by the state?
No, sir.
The county?
No, sir.
Okay, so, Kelsey, do we have any questions from the, from the public?
Not as of right now.
Okay, well, if some come up that are, you know, inappropriate to the subject, just waiver something, or say whatever, okay? We'll continue to keep the hearing open so that people have a chance, you know, especially under the live stream format, that's new to all of us, and... especially under the live stream format that's new to all of us and we don't want to rush it. But basically, the budget that is being proposed, regardless if it's the general, the general fund is, the general fund is the budget that is, has its primary funding through real property tax rate. The utility budgets have fees based on like your sewer fee, your electric, utility fee and so forth. So this is, this is talking basically about the general fund.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Can I ask, has anybody put on there as a comment from the town saying that we would like public comment now? Can we do that so that it's clear to everybody that we would now like to?
We did pin a comment letting them know that once you open the public hearing, we're welcoming questions, but I will say we're welcoming questions now.
Said that earlier.
Just in case somebody may be not able to hear or anything like that.
No problem. No, no, no. Get it done. Normally it's possible.
Okay, I have pinned, we are welcoming questions now regarding ordinance two thousand twenty oh two.
Which is?
And we do have a question. It's not really tax related, but what is the total cost of overhead for departments or utilities?
And this is regarding this ordinance, strict tonight, we promise strictly is about setting the real property tax rate for the town of Berlin for the new fiscal year, which begins July first.
Can we, can we take like ten minutes and let the comments come in and then?
Well, again, this will be the second time because remember that's why before we had that long presentation, I asked people to send the questions and comments. See, remember that's, that's why we didn't.
So are we looking back further in the thread?
I have been. There have not been any relevant to this ordinance, just stormwater related.
Yeah, I'm just saying, I mean, we can, certainly we're not rushing here, but.
I just envisioned like my mother there trying to type something. Now, that would take a little bit of time. What's that?
We can take five minutes.
That's why I was thinking if we gave it a little bit of time and just see if anything comes through.
Yeah, yeah. And everybody's trying to adjust to the live streaming and to the, to the stay-at-home life that we're all experiencing. One thing we can't, we may not be able to tonight get responses right back, but if you have a question, you think of it later, you can still send it in and then we can get a response back. Do that first. Okay.
We have a question from Marie Valong. Isn't the tax rate based on the budget?
Yes, of course. And what we're doing is cutting the general fund budget and I think the general fund budget that's being considered, we're not, we're not doing that tonight. That will be next month. But the general fund budget is being, is being considered for the new fiscal year is five point million dollars. That's a reduction of two hundred and forty-four thousand six hundred dollars or four percent below the current budget, the current year's budget. There again, it's a five point nine million general fund budget and that's four percent below the current budget. And this year's budget was below the previous years and the previous years were below. So this will be the third straight year our budget, general fund budget is going down.
Oh, yeah. Maybe spread. If I have a question, I'm going to use the restroom. Can you hold it?
If anybody's just joined this live stream of the mayor and council meeting, at this time, we're waiting to see if there are any questions regarding the tax rate that's being proposed for the new fiscal year, which begins July one. The new property tax rate, real property tax rate would remain the same as it currently is at eighty cents per hundred dollars of assessed value. So if you have a question, send it in. Kelsey will pass along to all of us.
So the next budget hearing we have is two weeks? Two weeks?
The budget adoption is on May twenty-sixth, Tuesday.
It's the day after Memorial, the night after Memorial.
And if anybody even has any questions for us between now and then, they need to.
Just send it in.
Send that in, submit them and see if you can get any answers between them. It doesn't have to happen during this, this timeframe right now.
It might be something to wake up in Memorial morning with.
Exactly.
No problem. Even the people who are not watching tonight.
Who watched last year's order game?
Yeah.
He said, "Oh, we're going to look at your plans." You may want to go back a few years to watch people's games. Last year wasn't the finest.
We have another question from Marie Valong. She said, "Staying at this rate, how much more are we getting this year than last year? Constant yield is what I think I am asking."
I can answer that.
Yes.
With the increase in assessed base value, we will receive a hundred fifty-three thousand dollars more, which is four percent more from what we budgeted for this current year.
Thank you.
What is the constant yield rate this year?
Zero point seven eight three something, something. We're two percent above the constant yield that came, came from the State Department assessment and certificate. It, it was advertised in the paper with the exact numbers that have the end.
It's basically roughly seventy-eight cent.
Yeah.
Yes, it's almost seventy-nine cents.
And that's the same difference as the county within what's wrong with the budget. That's the same percentage that they're, by holding their tax rate, it's exactly the same, you know, within, within a few dollars. Of course, they're bigger dollars and a much bigger budget, but the percentages are almost the same. But, and they're, they are also, just as we are proposing, just to hold the tax rate where it is.
And I think, I want to remind everyone as well, by virtue of the current pandemic, the cash flow inbound is going to be significantly delayed and/or potentially decreased.
Yep. So when you say that, I expand on that. For the, for folks listening, what does that mean?
Well.
We will not receive.
I'm sure.
We will not receive.
Explain, you know what I mean? Explain that.
But it's not that complicated, but it is not good news. Our revenues from our property taxes that come through, through the state probably will not be received until sometime in the first part of the year.
And that is because the state filing and federal filings have been pushed back, correct?
They last six months' extensions. There is no actual penalties and fees in place as of right now if you file late or if you pay late. And also you can have an appeal submitted, I believe through October for assessed value reduction.
Yeah.
And obviously the payments that normally will be with the due date go on July first with the billing will be delayed six months. The revenue stream collections will be delayed ultimately for six months.
We and everybody else will be waiting for our property tax income that comes to the state and county to us.
We don't bill, we pre-receive our share.
From the county.
For the town, from the county. So we don't calculate, we don't send invoices. They do.
At the state office, probably is what we're doing. Yeah. Thank you.
When we meet the casino income that we projected, that could possibly. We cut all those potential revenue streams down significantly.
And state and county operating on the very reduced staff. I have spoken to several people. They're literally very behind on paperwork as well because they're just either working from home or being laid off completely. So that's another problem we'll be facing, even though people will be applying and paying and processing their portion on their behalf, the state will be behind on catching up and the county as well because of the human labor.
Do we have any other questions?
No, we have been open the public hearing for twelve minutes now. No other questions.
So sorry, but everyone, we'll close the public hearing portion of tonight's meeting on the setting of the real property tax rate. And that we, the public hearing is now officially closed. The, we now have the decision to make as to rather to accept the recommendation that the town administrator and myself are making and the finance director to, to continue our property tax rate for the next fiscal year at eighty cents per hundred dollars of assessed value. Do we have a motion? Make a motion that we remain the same.
I have a question. Would we be able, we're, we just discussed that the budget is reduced by four percent and that what we would gain additional from last year to this year by keeping this rate unchanged would be a four percent increase. When I look at the numbers, I think, and it gets back to the stormwater issue. When we were talking about the fees and I talked to people and I listened in public, everybody says that it's high and that they're strapped. So the big part for me is that if we can provide a little bit of economic relief in a time when there's a lot of uncertainty and a lot of things that people, I mean, you just don't know if you'll be able to attend this meeting sometimes, I would like us to at least take a serious look at the constant yield rate. I think that it's doable. I don't think anybody would lose their jobs. I don't think any services would be cut.
I disagree. And let me tell you something else.
And you're allowed to.
Something else that has happened, we hear about all this financial stimulus and financial relief, it does not affect small towns. We are not part of that. We don't get business.
No, but it's affecting the people that live in our small town.
But the thing it is, we have to still maintain the services. We can't say, oh, we're going to run, we're going to, we're going to provide services now three days a week, whatever.
But I'm not saying that. What I'm saying is that by adopting the constant yield rate, it maintains that same level of revenue that we had last year and services would not be cut. Sure, we might not be able to splurge on some other things.
So basically, if people are paying more, it's because their property values went up and they have the right by law to appeal that. And if they feel that their property taxes should, their property assessable value should go up, that's between them and going to the county and the state.
And that's, that's easier said than done. Most people have the homestead tax credits phased in over a few period, a period of three years. And even if we keep this unchanged, they are going to pay more in July than what they paid last July. And in year three, they will pay more again, even if we don't touch it. That's just the nature of how that thing is phased in. And what, the only thing I am saying is let's please consider, which I think can be done, adopting the constant yield rate, which would give people a two percent drop and we wouldn't lose any additional revenue from last year to this year. Revenue would stay constant. That's the constant yield rate.
There's no guarantee that revenues will stay constant?
There isn't. I agree. There's no guarantee that if we pass this, that we'll get what we're asking for.
Councilman Tyndall, I have received a certificate from State Department Assessment and Taxation. As of right now, we have already almost for the town to bill in three million dollars in properties pending to appeal in reduction of assessed base value. If those cases will go through and will be approved, we will not receive the budgeted amount that we have on the budget listed as of right now.
I understand that.
And I think this is where it's individual citizens. We're not staying away. We, we don't get involved at all. It's complete with them. But we, we have a responsibility to pay our bills and provide the services. And, you know, nobody wants this situation, but it's our job to do our job and make sure that, that we provide the services that people absolutely depend on. And I think holding the rate is responsible. We may have some very tough times later this year and we may have to discuss those kinds of, of options. But I don't think we should plan for it. I don't think we should plan for, you know, major cutbacks when we have something that individuals, if they feel that they have a case, they should make the case. We can't make the case for them.
And, and I understand that. But what I'm saying is that we have, I mean, look at the unemployment rate. Look at the macroeconomic environment. That is going to trickle down to us and the government at the state level, at the federal level may be helping out. But I think by providing, I mean, two percent is involved. We all know that. But two percent is something. And if we can give a little bit of some relief, then I think it would be time to do that and it would be within our scope within the budget.
We didn't create the problem. We're not the ones who have any control over the macroeconomics of what's happening in this country. We're not benefiting from it in any way. And I feel we need to, our job is to take care of the town of Berlin, make sure that services are here and police protection and, and all that. And that's what we're committed to do. And if we find, face a financial dilemma later, we may have to reduce the budget. But right now, I think it would be irresponsible to start cutting further into our potential revenues when we know there's so many potential pitfalls that may happen between now and sometime this, this coming fiscal year. And we've got to have some baseline to work from. And I think this is one of the things is, is that sure, if there's, if we get manna from heaven, you are basically the federal government somehow, then wonderful. But we have to set a rate that we can always, you know, take a look at if there's some way in which we can help people if we're in the position to. But the thing it is, we, we, the bills are not going to stop. The bills to the town of Berlin will not stop. And the services have to be maintained and we're not, you know, I, I just, I just think that, you know, it's a nice thought. It's a very nice thought.
And it's a, it's a totally doable thought. It's not farfetched. It's not saying that we need to go back to the previous tax rate. It is saying, let's maintain the constant yield at seventy-eight and some change and make some tight cuts that put us in line so that we have a cushion, which we can do without jeopardizing services, without cutting any jobs.
This allows for a cushion, assuming everything doesn't go to hell.
We have, we have a cushion. We have some room to be able to do some work.
Well, I think it's irresponsible to, to start doing that at this time and at this stage at this time. And I just have to say though, it may not be popular, but doing, I think my responsibility is to do what I think is right for the town and the responsibility for the town and not be doing something that is a feel-good kind of thing.
And I think you've done that, Mayor, all due respect to everyone in this room. You know, two months ago, we sat here and we talked about a potential real tax rate that you need to set.
I would argue the same thing.
I can tell you that, to speak candidly, I know that the mayor and with what's going on now with the pandemic, that was a major factor in doing what we've done.
But respectfully, if we look at what we spent last year, we didn't, nobody suffered last year. Here at town hall in all of our departments, no individual or service was cut and the constant yield rate would maintain that and it would provide some relief to the people of Berlin.
What you're talking about is a sixty dollar credit on three hundred thousand dollar assessment. We cut five cents off this tax rate and I can tell you what was the biggest mistake we ever made.
I'm not saying.
It felt good.
I'm not saying it felt good and I'm not saying it feels good.
That's while you're, sixty dollars, which time is that? I don't.
Sixty dollars is a lot to some people.
Well, I, I'm very sorry if that's going to make or break someone. If that is, then their life is beyond our rescue. And I hope that's not the case. I hope that there's adjustments can be made. But the adjustments, we're making our cuts, we're making sure that the service can be provided and. We're making sure that the service can be provided. And I stand by the recommendation that I know I've made and the town administrator and the finance director have made. And now it's up to you, the council, because that's, this is a decision that must be made tonight. So.
I started a pollution.
Okay.
And I make a motion that we keep the rate the same.
We have a motion by Councilmember Brittingham to maintain the current tax rate for real property taxes in the town of Berlin at eighty cents per hundred dollars of assessed value. All papers say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Opposed.
Okay. The, thank you. For that, for the vote tally on that decision was three, four, and one against. We've become, that's it. Thank you again. Next is the first reading of Berlin Town Budget, which we will not be making the decision tonight, but it is the first formal introduction. We've had work sessions. The general fund, again, total is, as I mentioned earlier, is $5.9 million, a reduction of $244,630, or four percent below the current budget. The electric fund total is $5.5 million, an increase of $173,641, a three percent. The water fund total is $941,000, an increase of $25,975, a three percent. The sewer fund budget being proposed is $2.5 million, an increase of $56,890, or two percent. And the stormwater fund total is $379,000, a decrease of $75,000, or a decrease of 70 percent. I think our approach to expenditures is very conservative while still ensuring that all town services are maintained at a high consistent level. Town revenue streams, which are projected to be lower than normal for the new fiscal year, which begins July first, are income taxes, room taxes, building permits and fees, and state highway user funds. Berlin's real property assessments base will increase by four percent, but all property taxes will not be received until early 2021, over six months after the new budget is implemented and after citizens have had an opportunity to appeal their assessed value. The primary budget increases in the proposed budget are two percent increase for regular employees, which have not had an increase for a while, and four percent increase, which we have no control over, in our health insurance premiums, and a nine percent increase for all of our sworn officers in Berlin Police Department, which is the lowest state police department in this region, regardless of the size of the municipality. Our largest general fund capital projects proposed for the new fiscal year are street improvements at $111,000, funded by the state highway user revenues, and the Henry Park basketball court lighting at $108,500, funded by the state parks and recreation grant. Capital projects for the general fund for each of the utility funds are shown in the information posted that will be posted in the town's website, meaning from our meeting packet. And is that now or would that be?
Yes.
Okay. So anybody that wants to look at the particulars of any of these, it's on the website now. And by the way, probably everyone knows this, but the town's website is www.burlinmd.gov. Now, now, Natalie, will you share with all of us any changes that have been made to the proposed budget that we're discussing tonight, but will not be acted on until next month? Anything that's changed as a result of the work sessions that we held tonight?
So we hold two sessions for general fund work sessions to discuss the details and also a second one for utility funds. As of the second session, the utility funds have been discussed, we have highlighted the opportunity to start a small repayment or get on a scheduled plan from the sewer funds to start repaying general fund and also stormwater, repaying the general fund. So those transfers are highlighted and it's, is a change from the work session, page three. The middle of the page, you will see contribution from sewer of $50,000, contribution from stormwater, $25,000. Once again, as I mentioned at the utility funds, those transfers will not be done till the very end of the fiscal '21 and they're totally dependent on the situation, how the revenue is going to come, and the utilities and availability for us to actually execute those transfers. So another change on page seven, when we distributed the allocation for customer service. So customer service is allocated through the utility funds by the percentage. When I married the two funds, two budgets together for the utility and general fund and the customer service being allocated, that presented an opportunity to allocate $100,000 to be put back to reserves. So you will see a new line item on page seven, middle of the page, and I call it stabilization reserve. Again, that would be a transfer from general fund to the reserves in case if all the revenues will come in as projected and everything will play out to the benefit of that, we will be able to do a transfer to reserves, $75,000 from the utility and $100,000 from general fund to have in reserves. That's the only change I have from the work sessions.
Does anybody have any questions for Natalie regarding the proposed budget for the next fiscal year? If not, go ahead.
I do, but I think my questions are rather lengthy. So I talked to Jeff and I think it's probably better if you and I schedule a time to discuss that.
That's fine. Sure. And to see, everyone knows, the public hearing on the budget for the town of Berlin for the next fiscal year is scheduled for our next regular session meeting, which is Tuesday, May 26th, the day after, the night after Memorial Day. And that's when, we have a public hearing and after the public hearing, we anticipate that that's when the council will be asked to take a vote on proposed budget.
May I just add, it's seven o'clock and it's going to be a live stream again. So nothing changes from the settings, just for people to listen.
It'll be the same format.
Yes. And everybody welcome to send their questions. In between, it doesn't have to be at the meeting.
Yeah. You can do it. I'll do it anytime.
Questions for that, I mean, the budget is done out there. We've, we've discussed that the public hearing will be on the 26th. So questions can be, as folks have questions, they can start submitting them as we speak now.
And we started this process back in first of March.
Is this, is this new draft budget available online?
This particular draft that you're looking at right now, available online, have been posted since Wednesday of last week. It will remain on the website till we replace with adopted budget.
Can we make a Facebook post or something that says this is the draft budget and this is the process by which you'll send your questions? Not that. I'm just saying from a public comment standpoint, it would be a nice.
Wednesday of next week, we will post the most recent draft budget along with the cover sheet that I included this time around, explaining the, the process on submitting questions and the live stream process. So that will all be updated on Wednesday with the newest available.
Is that this Wednesday?
I'm sorry, Wednesday before the meeting, which is the.
Next Wednesday, the 20th, I think it is.
Yes, it is the 20th.
Well, I mean, it's good. I know with all that, but can you just post the actual budget that we've just been discussing?
It's in the council packet.
It's a lot of pages and that way people can have that extra week.
Yeah, it's currently.
It's on the website now.
Yeah, that's, that's fine.
That budget's already posted there.
But what I'm saying is if you could just send a Facebook notice to remind me, you know, it's one of those things where everybody's got a lot on their mind these days and that way they can be reminded, you can find the budget on the website and then.
We'll link it.
And, yeah, and the other things that will be happening next week.
And just to make sure that the information in that post says this is how you can solicit your questions for comment. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is the town administrator's report.
I've got a couple things, Mayor and Council. One, I just want to, you heard Natalie talk about these reserve stabilization. So we, we had presented there, we started the dialogue anyway and put it in writing within draft reserve policy. So that'll be introduced to you in the very future as well. Okay? I want to remind everyone that we do have open enrollment for health, health benefits. That'll be next Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday. Week from tomorrow, it begins Tuesday. It'll be in the AM. Wednesday will be from eight to four and then Thursday from one to, one to four. And it'll take place. Some are going to be spread out this year by virtue of the social distancing. Not as many vendors, but it'll be set up here, a conference room, potentially down in the old police station. So I ask that everyone please make your presence known so you can sign a couple of documents. I'd like to get some things updated, make sure that there aren't your emergency contacts, your beneficiaries and stuff like that. Departmental reports. From the, from Ivy, she wishes me to inform you all that we have expanded the footprint of the farmer's market to include both Pitts and Commerce Street. The new layout was very well received. She's working with a museum on a new outdoor sign and we'll be meeting with them about the beach house or the beach festival. It's currently scheduled for the first weekend in August. Worked with DES art teacher Melissa Reed on a kids' art project called, quote, "What I Can't Wait to Do in Berlin," unquote. drawings, which will be posted on the town's Facebook at a later, later date. Papers will be put into place in the island area near the corner of Pitts and Main Street. The contractor, the contractor's been awarded Danny Moore. Lisa Challenger and Melanie Purcell and Ivy will be filming the Beach and Beyond Show downtown Tuesday morning. That's an annual commercial that Ivy assists with, with the folks in the county. Water resources reports for the past two weeks, meter readings, troubleshooting, the drawing bed mole failure. Cleaned this filter at the treatment plant. Lovely NED DMR reports, created hints, sanitizer stations for the farmer's market. There was a sway on Evans Road to allow for groundwater to go back into the catch basin. And if I may highlight on that, if you bend west on Evans Road before you get to the railroad track, that road's been compromised. Water has not been leaving the road. So they, they've gotten rid of the water and we're hoping tomorrow it has some asphalt that then they'll fix that. Replaced an alternator switch at the Broad Street lift station, assisted AT&amp;T to access the water tower. Troubleshooting high levels of alarms at 346 West. Replaced pump at 346 West. The pump was failing. And Jamie said he went through every troubleshooting option there was. And obviously, it's always the last thing that gets it right. Collected monitoring well samples at the spray site, at spray site one. And that's my report and the departmental reports. Unless Natalie or Mary, do you have anything?
No, I don't have anything.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Basically, I just briefly want to say that, and no one knows exactly when the reopening of our state will happen. I think in terms of internal planning, we're hopeful that some reopening will begin by the end of this month. Basically by Memorial Day and that the remainder phases of reopening, if there's no major setbacks, will maybe be accomplished by the first of July. That's our general plan internally. We're obviously waiting for guidance from the governor, Governor Hogan. Thank everyone for their extraordinary patience working with the town during these very trying times. Next, any comments from the council yet?
I have one. And I kind of piggybacked off of Ivy's thing. And you and I talked at the farmer's market. So the farmer's market was just Pitts Street, then it was extended to Commerce and still gets somewhat congested in there. And we have more vendors than what we have space. We also have several businesses that want to participate and may not have the space to be able to accommodate that. And I was talking to Ivy and I was like, why don't we incorporate a little bit of Main Street? Typically, we shut down Main Street for many different events and those things have been canceled. So Ivy's discussion affected me was that that would be something that we would have to discuss here and run by Arnold, but I don't see why in the time that we're in that we don't try to make the most out of Commerce that we can. And if we can shut down a portion of Main Street and still keep it so that people can go around and get where they need to go on a Sunday, I think it would be a nice thing to do. It'll provide extra revenue to our shops. It'll provide some extra revenue downtown. And it fits with what needs to be done.
I think.
There has to be proof, but state doesn't.
No, no. Well, no. Basically, they defer to our thing because it's our town and they've got so many bigger things to deal with.
I just, I think that there are some areas that we can cut off and really expand it. One, it's going to provide a little bit more room for people to social distance. Two, it'll provide more space for people to conduct commerce.
And I think your idea, like when you mentioned it Sunday morning, I think it's an excellent idea. And I'll put this way, it's like anything else, we'll give it all the thought, if the council approves. Give it all the thought, needs, try it. If we need to do some tweaking, we can do that. But I don't think anybody will be prohibited from getting to church services or, or any other place you're trying to get to for that, that one.
And if they are, we can adjust. I mean, we, we started with just Pitts Street. We took some, some employees and we really grown the market and there appears to be more demand than we have supply. So let's extend that a little bit.
It's a wonderful problem to have, especially in these times.
Especially in these economic times. So if that's something that we can make happen, I think it'd be great. And extend that offer to our businesses. If they want to open up a little outdoor market that meets those social distancing demands, then go ahead. I think it falls within the governor's mandate.
Yeah. And, and, exactly. If I understand, I want to make sure I've interpreted, you know, what are your thoughts? Correct me, is that obviously we prohibit traffic during the hours of the farmer's market, wouldn't be 12 hours or whatever, before the farmer's market opens and for setup and then until the farmer's market is completely clear, prohibit traffic on Main Street. Of course, it's already prohibited on part of Pitts and Commerce. Then the second part of that would be that once, that that is accomplished, I would recommend, and I think it, I think it reflects what you're saying, and correct me if I'm wrong, is that we would be encouraging businesses on Main Street to put their, to put a table out, outside on the sidewalk. We've got plenty of space. You can apply plenty of social distancing. I don't see any difference between those businesses and the people who are participating in the farmer's market. And quite frankly, I think the draw then, there would be more people coming to the farmer's market. And if they have an interest in seeing any of the, the goods that are available on the street during that same time, I don't see the downside.
I don't either. And everybody was wearing a mask. People were trying to be as cordial as they can. Our streets are only so wide. So you can only distance so far, but I thought that it was, it was pretty good. I mean, the market was thriving. People were there. Everybody was being kind.
Does anybody have any comments?
It's not a great idea.
All right. So we need to have a motion then and a vote?
I'll make a motion.
Please.
As previously stated and summarized by the mayor.
Yeah, fine. So bottom line is we will be, during the farmer's market hours, we'll set up and then and throughout the farmer's market and then when it's taken down, have traffic prohibited from going through Main Street at the intersection of Commerce and Main and Pitts. And how far back that goes and all, we'll let the police decide. Whatever they think. It makes sense for them. But that, that would be done. And that we would also be through. And that we would also be, through the, through our Economic Community Development Department, encouraging Main Street businesses, or any businesses downtown who wants to set up a table on sidewalks on Main Street, to sort of do that during the hours of the farmer's market.
And, and I would also ask that after the, after that timeframe of the farmer's market's over, that the people take their stuff back inside, because if you keep that stuff outside, and it just, I mean, everybody was trying to do a good job of being respectful of the cars and crossing Main Street to get between Pitts and Commerce, but it's still not as safe as it could be. So I would say that after those hours, please take your stuff back in.
Yeah, that makes sense. That way, that way there's not a conflict, it's not, it's not, everybody has a target for people to come knowing what to expect, and the people who are participating can also know it. But I think it's a very good idea.
Are you talking just about essential-type businesses setting up tables? Are you talking about anybody?
No, businesses on Main Street.
And I'm pretty sure, yeah.
Is that going to run afoul?
Well, you know what? I'm determined that we're going to reopen in a common-sense, reasonable way. I see no difference between people setting up a table for farmer's market and some of those, some of the businesses already participating, and anybody else. I mean.
I think the Department of Commerce has reined in on this, and they've said that we fit within those confines.
Yeah.
I mean, Jeff and Ivy have spoken to the Department of.
Well, we will confirm that.
Okay.
Okay, but I'm pretty certain as well that we're fine.
You know, we don't want to break any rules, but we want to provide the most opportunity within those rules.
And I think there's the thing, it's, it's, it's our responsibility to figure out how to make this transition in a, in a responsible way. There's social distancing, people have to wear masks, all the things they have to do if they're already here.
I'm sorry, our police chief has asked if he could call in, he has comments on this. He said he, he sees some issues.
Well, he can talk to us later.
Okay.
Yeah, that's fine.
If it's something that's not permitting, we'll deal with that if it's something that is.
Yeah.
Okay. I also have a question about the businesses that are not on the Main Street, for example, Bake Dessert or businesses on that side.
But they're allowed to be in the farmer's market.
Um, so then, yeah, we'll have to discuss how they will participate.
I'm sorry, we just threw a logistical nightmare at Ivy and the police chief's, chief's direction, but if you can make it work, please do.
Yeah, yeah. I, I think there again, let's use common sense, and let's not discriminate and say, okay, these people can, can set up a stand, and these people can. We're all here trying to support each other in the same identical way. There's no, there's no extra, no lowering of standards in making this transition, and quite frankly, I'm hoping some other, other communities, if they see this work, might, might follow soon.
And we might not get it right right away, but we can take.
I think, I think before we put the cart before the horse, let's tomorrow confirm that we are within the limits that we can do this, or not do it.
Well, again, I think it's time to take some, what I'll call proactive, reasonable strides. In reality, this is, this is a terrible thing that's happened. But in reality, the rural counties in this state are being severely punished because of five counties where there's a real problem, and, and including four counties in Baltimore City. And I realize that the people are highly congested there, I realize, I feel for them, I'm very sorry for them, but there's got to be a point where, wait a minute, we, we're all doing what we're supposed to do, and we're being punished economically, and, and the small, the small businesses, not large businesses, small businesses are the foundation of our economics of our community, both from a standpoint of revenues and also employment. And I think it's time for small towns to stand up and be heard. And I know that might not be totally popular, but it's not a time to do what's popular, it's time to do its right. And so please, you all, refer with the chief, you know how I feel, and check, and let's, let's, let's see what we can do.
Do you need a formal motion, or we have that?
What, what do you, what do you?
I don't know.
I'm, I'm showing it, however you all.
I think the motion needs to be, you want to pursue it.
He wouldn't pursue.
Make a motion that we pursue it, in a safe and healthy and manner.
Oh, we have a motion to pursue this idea that we've been discussing regarding the farmer's market and its extension along Main Street. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. Fastest sports either. All right, thank you.
That was my only comment.
That was a very good one, though, thank you. All right, any other comments?
Nothing, sir.
Okay. All righty.
Somebody has to be D.
Oh, make a motion to adjourn.
We have a motion to adjourn, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.